Welcome to the August 11th, 2014, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us, please, our Commissioner.
I guess I can introduce him as Planning Commissioner and County Commissioner, like Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis.
Most gracious, Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day you've given us this opportunity to have to come together to deal with issues of this county. Father, we ask that you watch over us, that you protect us, that you guide us, give us the direction that we should go. Leave this county, it's a blessed county, but Father, may we always remember the things that we do have come from you. Watch over us all throughout this prayer in your Son's holy name. Amen.
My pleasure, Jesus, to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
I'll roll, please, Terry.
Rhonda Allen, Jim Everwater, Veronica Buchanan, Will Jordan, Mike Koosh, Craig Lynch, Chip Pinion, Pettis Reed, Steve Sandlin, Mike Vob, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Did you have a quorum? All voting members are present, sir.
Time we need to approve our July 28 meeting minutes, and I'll call on our Vice Chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I just want my question to approve July 28 minutes.
Thank you, Craig. Need a second? Have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, then motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is items withdrawn or deferred. We don't have any, but we're also going to want to add a couple of items. I thank Doug, so we'll need to suspend the rules to have a brief conversation on a couple of items.
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules, and a second. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to bring these two Platts to you tonight. These are both Platts, and I'll go over them both just quickly here. We'll need separate motions for these, since they're both separate items. But these are both items that you have seen in the past that have come for waivers to either the fire hydrant requirement or the off-site soils requirement. First is Rockvale Acres. You have copies of these sitting on your tables. The Platt that is before you is in good order. Really, the only reason we're bringing it before you is because it needed the waiver. Mr. Jordan, I know that the last meeting, we had some conversations about whether or not we could still approve these administratively after a waiver was granted. We did meet with our legal staff, and, long story short, after we discussed it, we felt it was, the state law reading really required a vote by the Planning Commission, which is why we're bringing them here tonight. We didn't want them to wait another couple of weeks. This Platt, as you recall, had two lots, I think about seven acres of land, and it was just a small, about 100 or 200 feet outside of the distance from the fire hydrant requirement, so they have asked for that waiver. That waiver was granted by the Planning Commission at their June 23 meeting. The other item that you'll be looking at tonight, we're asking for you to consider, is the Underwood Platt. Let me turn this off here. There we go. As you recall, this was a request for an off-site soils waiver. There's a small amount of the existing soils right here that's actually gonna be, that is actually gonna be on the existing property when this property line comes through. Again, this was granted, the waiver, at the July 14th, meaning just about a month ago. The Platts, again, they have both been revised according to the comments we had. They're both in good order. We're just asking for approval of these items, just because of the waivers attached to both of them. The applicants for both are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Take 'em one at a time, Doug.
Yes, sir.
Rockvale Acres.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve, Rockvale Acres, and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, then motion carries. Underwood subdivision? Motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, then motion carries. Thank you. Item number six are our public hearings, zoning requests, item 6A, various amendments to the subdivision regulations. Our planning staff is the applicant. These amendments are primarily housekeeping in nature, with some of the more significant changes concerning the adoption of our 2012 International Fire Code. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, the changes that are being considered tonight, we're gonna be looking at both subdivision regulation amendments and zoning ordinance amendments. Just so the process is clear, when it comes to the subdivision regulations, those basically end here, whatever happens tonight. If these are approved, as staff has presented, those will not have to go through to the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission has the final say on that. The zoning ordinance amendments, on the other hand, being that it's a document approved by the County Commission, does have to move forward. So those will be considered at the Board of Commissioners next month with a separate public hearing. That being said, what we're gonna do is, Mr. Hill and I are gonna kinda tag-team approach this. Everybody should have a copy of the agenda on your table, and the regulations and the changes we're proposing are listed in there. We're just gonna kinda go piece by piece, and just kinda give a brief overview of all the different amendments. And there are quite a few of them, but most of them, again, these are, most of the housekeeping in nature, but we'll spend a little more time on some of the more significant ones. And Mr. Larry Farley is also here. If you have any questions specific to the Fire Code, he'll be more than happy to answer those. But just going ahead and getting started, on Article 2, under preliminary plans, we're proposing to amend G1. This is really just the section that deals with the establishment of the time schedule and the submittal requirements to our office. You'll see, we've crossed out a couple of things there. The first thing is, we've, currently, it reads at least five working days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, where we think what happened there is, as staff, we were kinda going back and forth, either leave it as three working days, or change it to five days, which would basically make it the Wednesday before the Planning Commission meeting, to get revisions back to our office, which gives us more than enough time to make sure that the changes that we've asked the design engineer and applicants to make have been made. We think what happened there is, we just decided to go with five. We just accidentally left working in there. So that would really make it the Monday before the Planning Commission, which is not enough time, really, for the design engineers to get their work done. So what we're proposing to do is just scratching off the working, just leave it at five days. And then you'll see, we've also crossed out the number of copies, just because the number of copies can vary, depending on, A, where we're meeting, if we're meeting here versus where we're meeting at the mezzanine, also the type of application. Sometimes, the number of copies can vary. So we just decided to change that as revised plans as required by the planning, and then we added an engineering department. You'll also notice in 2B7, that we just added a small, this part should've been there to begin with, proposed overall drainage and stormwater concept plan, as opposed to just concept, with any onsite or offsite stormwater elements. Again, that just goes along in what we want to see on the preliminary plan. At this point, I'll turn this over to Eric, and we get a little further down, and I'll take back over.
Under Section H, it's H with construction plans, the second paragraph under the heading there, but we're basically just adding the design engineer. We've been doing that for the last year, where I require the design engineer to be at all the pre-construction meetings, because we used to guess too much about what the intent was, so we just made a requirement that they be there. We've been doing that for some time. The second one there is to delete that third paragraph, and that's basically redundancy. It's already covered in another section, so we're just deleting it from this section. To amend to Section F, basically just adds, at the discretion of the county engineer at the end of that, just kind of a catch-all, because a lot of times we get into situations where we're looking for things on the construction drawings that are hard to spell out everything, so that just kinda gives us a catch-all, that we can officially require things. On the next page, to amend 4, the second paragraph, I guess this is our attempt at political correctness, and we're adding his and her design for the engineer. So amend 4E, we had misspelled the word slope. We left the S off, so we're fixing that. Amend 4O, basically with consistency. We had said something to the effect of lowest pad, and we just changed that to minimum pad, just to stay consistent with the wording. 4P, we require that the erosion and sediment controls now are on a separate sheet, stand-alone, so that we can have clarity. And so that's just to clean that up. 4T, when our process realigned, we had that, the timing on that worded a little differently, so we just changed it to say, after the pre-construction meeting, that's when I approve the construction drawings. And so, basically, that makes the construction meeting a requirement of construction plans being approved. And then I will turn it back over to Doug.
Thanks, Eric. Under I, final Platt. This is similar to what we just talked about under preliminary plan, just change the five, just make it five days, opposed to five working days. Really, the same changes here, took the number of copies out, just as is required by the Planning and Engineering Department. Moving on to the next page, it says amend I3A. This is the section of the subdivision regulations that deals with what we want to see on final Platts. Typically, we do see existing buildings on the final Platts that are submitted to our office, if there are any. However, that wasn't specifically spelled out, so we wanted to go ahead and add that in there, so we did. And then there were a couple other things that you can see that we added to the following, added to the minimum design standards. There were three things there. A statement of purpose for the Platt, a block showing the time and date of recording. Again, those are things we typically see, but we just wanted to make sure it was codified. And then critical lots, which we'll discuss in a little more detail in just a little bit, but with that, there's another item that we wanted to add there. Amend 4, Section 4, in this particular part of the subdivision regulations, deals with the certifications we wanna see on final Platts. And we have some of them in Appendix A, but not all of them. You'll see that the ones that we currently have in Appendix A, and these ones don't change much, is the ownership and dedication, accuracy, and approval. What we decided to do, as opposed to putting the ones for the utilities in there, for water, electric, and subsurface, basically septic tank, or sewer, however they were doing that, since those certifications are typically provided by the utility companies themselves, we just said, on whatever language that the provider was gonna give them to put on the Platt. That way, if for whatever reason the provider changed the language, we wouldn't have to go back and amend the Platt. So it just made more sense to keep the standard ones in there, the firstly that we talked about, and then just allow the utility providers to put their, whatever language they would need, on the Platts themselves. Also, you'll notice under C, and we talked about this briefly at the last meeting, we took away the chairman or vice chairman having to sign off on the Platts, and leaving it with the Secretary of the Planning Commission. As you recall, you know, we talked with our neighboring counties and some municipalities just to find out if it's something that they did, if they had their chairman sign off on it, or just their secretaries. Uniformly, it was pretty much just the secretary, and there's not a legal requirement that the chairman of the Planning Commission has to sign off on those Platts. So we're just gonna go ahead and just take that part of it off. They'll still have to come to the Planning Commission, it's just the chairman will not have to sign off on them. So nothing's really changing from that standpoint. Any other questions to this point? We're going kinda fast, so if you have any questions, just feel free to jump in. Finally, you'll see on the next page there, G, if sanitary sewers to be used, a certificate using language provided by the sewer provider. Again, that just kinda goes along. If we do run to a project that does use city sewer, typically, they have to be, well, they do have to be approved by the city as well, so that language would be provided at that time. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Eric.
In Article 3 here, the minimum design standards, a lot of this is just housekeeping. For the first part here, they remove item D, where it talks about the Rutherford County Health Department. That's really not applicable anymore. It's not, we don't deal with the Health Department anymore. So just remove that. C5B is the first time we're actually gonna talk about the Fire Code. This is where we change our stub street, or basically our street length requirement to require cul-de-sac from 500, we'll go to 150. And this just changes that number straight from in there. And so this is like we've talked about on the Fire Code. And then you go to D5, which is critical lots, like we've talked about the last couple times we've met, where, you know, we kinda, we stole that language from and tweaked it a little bit from a local community around us. And basically, we've got a cross-slope of 15% or a downslope of 20%. And then also kinda got the discretion of the county engineer, too. So we've got these really steep lots, that we can look at those and say, okay, we probably need to look at these a little bit more in-depth per lot. And we've got it in the verbiage here, where we talk about, basically, they have to put a star on the lot, and the star will signify a critical lot. That'll also let building codes know that they won't issue a building permit until there's a plot plan for that lot that shows in detail what's gonna happen. This is pretty typical around us. Section G1B, we removed the word basement from that sentence there, and that's basically just FEMA terminology. And so, the more I learn about FEMA, the more we're tweaking some of this stuff. So just to make sure that's basically compliant with the way FEMA uses their terminology.
Eric, one point of clarification, back under C on that 150-foot
Yes.
for a turnaround. And I think it's all right. I'm just wondering, let's say, stub street going into a future Section 3, or 4, or 5, or whatever, and it dead-ends into the fence line, or something like that. We're not talking about a turnaround there. We're talking, you know, it can still dead-end into that as a street, 'cause you're thinking, maybe, okay, you got a house on each corner then, and there's a stub street there that's possible, gonna be a phase, whatever, on the development, maybe.
A lot of our typical lots, especially 15,000 square feet, they're 100 by 150. So even on that lot you're talking about, that would be okay. It would be 150. Now, if it gets to a bigger lot that's 200 feet long, then yes, we would have to do. Now, it could be a temporary turnaround. It would still be that, the purpose would still be that stub street, but we could basically pave kinda wings on the road there. And we've done that different ways. Sometimes they stay. I know, there's a couple roads I can think of where you're just driving down, and there's like a bubble in the road, then you keep going when they add it on. Or you can put something on the Platt, or we can make the new developer come in and remove that and make it straight. We'd probably leave that up to the homeowner. Yes, but, yeah.
I'm a little uncomfortable with that myself. You know, to me, it might oughta have a number of lots, 'cause a lot of lots are 175 feet deep or something, and that would dictate, if there's just a house on each corner, there'd still be a cul-de-sac. And if it's budding up to the neighboring farmer's property, that cul-de-sac's not gonna go on him. It's gonna encroach on his lots. And what I see is, a lot of people are gonna just do the minimum number of connections as possible, if they have to build a cul-de-sac, now they're losing footage off their lots and all. And I'm thinking about the guy next door, who's got a field right there, and that's access for him in the future and all. And I hate to get it where the developers are telling their engineer, put as few connections as possible, 'cause we have to do a cul-de-sac. I mean, I don't know, I would like for it to say if there's more than two houses on each side, or something like that. I'm just brainstorming here, but I farm, I've got a little spot out there. We go through a subdivision to get to a cornfield, and there's a lot on each side. Those lots are about 175, 200 feet deep, so there would have to be a cul-de-sac there. Nobody goes there besides, I pull up to the gate and go on the cornfield. But if that would've been done today, they probably wouldn't have left that access there at all, if they would've just skipped as far as possible. I'm just, that's just a pretty good change from 500 to 150, but that's just my opinion. It oughta be yours.
No, and I hear you exactly. And what I would envision on something like that, you get into this 200-foot range, is, like I said, they do something a little bit more temporary. And the stub street's still there, and it's not like a typical cul-de-sac, where you're, the cul-de-sac stops, and you have lots at the end of it. The cul-de-sac would touch the property line, so it would kinda, the end of the bulb would be at the, right at the property line. So the neighbor would still have access, and it would still allow for turnaround of emergency equipment, and school buses, and garbage trucks, too. But I hear exactly what you're saying. G1D, this is something we've had in our regs for a long time, but we've never really enforced it a whole lot, and it's really not practical in the way we do things, where we have a, we've always required a 20-foot, 25-foot wide yard supplanting a house in a floodplain. Well, when you take a 100-foot wide lot and a 60-foot wide house, 60-foot plus 25-foot on each side, it's not gonna fit. And so, you end up with these really big pads. And so, more practical is 10 feet. Also, the building code requirement for slope up next to the house is such that it, the math won't work on a 25-foot pad. We would have to build up higher than our three-feet requirement to make everything work. So 10-foot is, we feel like's adequate, and it's really pretty close to what's been going on for the last several years. And so, that 2GB kinda goes with that, too. It just, they were kinda the same thing. So just removing 2GB. In Section H, under stormwater design, that first paragraph there, we just changed the timing from the, we've learned that we don't require the maintenance agreement before they start construction, 'cause things change, and so it's better. And since we get those recorded, we try to wait and hold off till the final Platt is recorded, so that way, if there's any deviations from the original design, that we catch that. H1 is something that, it kinda slipped past us on the last stormwater or sub-rig update that we did. We removed kind of an old rule that, you know, used to, we would do subdivisions, and if a blue line stream ran through the property, we wouldn't require detention, okay? And so, we had some developments come through that kinda, I hate to say, took advantage, but it wasn't our favorite idea. We would've probably rather had a pond, but they kinda met that rule. And so, we pulled that out when we did our last overhaul. And then, since then, of course, we've had a couple come in where it, it wasn't a great situation to put a pond. And we've talked before about, when you look at a watershed, sometimes, depending on where you're at in a watershed, it's good to have detention right by a stream, especially if you're at the very top, at the reach of the watershed. Detention up there holds all the water, and it lets all the water downstream get out of there, and then you release it timely. If you're right down by the river, and there's a creek going up, you don't always want to do detention right there. And it's, every case is unique, and we look at that back and forth. So we felt like the best thing to do was to put that back in there, and put that, my favorite phrase, if approved by the county engineer. It just gives us some discrepancy. We've had some, we've just had some cases come through where it just, it made good sense, and in some cases, it doesn't. So that, kinda leaving a little bit of leeway there. We felt like it was a good idea. On that next page, under H1F, to go along with that, we've also had some detention ponds in the floodplain, and I guess that's because of our new rule, that aren't, to me, don't make any sense at all. If it's in on the floodplain, and it's gonna rain an inch, and the whole thing's gonna be underwater, what's the point, you know? And so, this language in here will give us a little bit of discretion to say, okay, you know, 'cause it, the intent of a detention pond, when we need it, is to limit the amount of water that runs downstream. And so, if the whole thing's underwater, as soon as it starts raining, then it's very pointless. And so, this language in here will just kinda give us a little bit of leeway to work with engineers to say, hey, you know, we gotta do something that's doing the intent, which is to make a difference with the water, and not just, you know, send everything downstream. Article 4 is about bonds, and this is just cleaning up a few things. We do not accept bonds anymore. We've talked about that. You know, we accept letter credit, cash, no more bonds. And so, basically, a lot of this, what we're fixing to talk about, just cleans that up. That's in the opening paragraph there. We removed the word bond. In Section A2BIIIC, there's a lot to that. We removed that 90-day restriction to 60 days, because that's practical, and that's what the banking institution does. If they're gonna call a bond on us, they typically say they'll do it within 60 days. So they send us a letter. And we've had one of those, where a development was coming to a close, and instead of the developer renewing their bond, they sent us a letter and said, hey, you know, we're gonna cancel this bond in 60 days. But we knew that in two weeks, that the development was gonna be over. So we were okay with that. 90 days after talking with banks, they just said, we don't know in 90 days, but we will in 60. So that's us kinda working with them. A3 there, we're just taking the word surety bond out. A4, taking insurance company out, because that refers to bonds. B6, that's back to us being politically correct, adding a his and her in there. Appendix A, under certifications.
We talked about this a little bit in budget the other night, and I'm feeling so much better with what you're wanting to do in this realm. What other, you said, where y'all looked at other cities, Nashville, whatever, maybe, I don't know, what other cities or big cities that are doing this, and how smooth is it running? So, I mean, we're, hopefully we're catching up to times, or doing something here that's gonna be a lot more feasible for us.
I don't know of anybody else that's not taking bonds. I mean, I'm sure there are communities. I don't know of any. I know a lot of communities that would like to, but just can't, for whatever reason. And so, us getting back, I mean, we feel pretty comfortable with letter of credit. You know, we're dealing with a bank inside the state of Tennessee. We like that. I like to be able, if something goes wrong, I can take that piece of paper and go to a person at a desk and say, give us $200,000, whatever, and they'll do it. Instead of, with an insurance company, you know, they have to be, I don't know how that works. They're, somehow, they're bonded in the state of Tennessee, but they don't necessarily have to have an office here. I don't understand the bond.
I had this conversation the other day, and, you know, it was presented to me that, you know, you're trying to stifle growth and all this sort of stuff. Whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not. What we're trying to do is keep from the taxpayers being held hostage.
Exactly.
On picking up a developer's debt, or a developer's, you know, situation that they should've taken care of, and jumped ship on us. And we didn't have any fail safes in there to take care of these things. Now, I don't think it's the taxpayer's responsibility to pick up the tab on something that's been left, not been done, or whatever. And then you've got all these people in these subdivisions, and the final code hadn't been done, blah, 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 and all this other stuff. So I'm hoping this is gonna take care of the situation. I really do. And I hope a good high percent, 90% of the building community understands that. The ones that don't, then they're gonna have to just get used to it. But I think this is to protect the county, and to protect our taxpayers, and have them to pick up the tab for a developer's mistake, or not doing something. And so, that's all we're doing. This is not in any way pointing to slow down growth, or to stop growth, or to hammer down on the developers, or whatever. It's to make sure that they do what they say they're gonna do. That's all.
Right.
Well, we maintain a file of those institutions that have not performed as we expected. Is there a specific file? I'm wondering, you know, if something happens to Doug, and, you know, two or three of them retire. I wanna make sure that somebody can go to a file somewhere.
Right. Well, as far as the bonds are concerned, I know we've had a lot of issues out of one particular bond company. Of course, we won't mention that here, but I don't know if we really have a list so much, Eric, really, per se. It's really...
No, I mean, other than the
I was just curious, you know.
The stack of lawsuit documents that go along with their name. I mean, honestly, I mean, that's, you know...
That one, that's probably pretty good.
We do have one thing, though, over in Article 4. Article 4, number 2, Section 4 down there. An insurance company whose past performance has resulted in non-payment of a bond may be excluded from providing a surety bond for any owner or developer for a period of five years from the date of breach. So that's something we added back, back last fall. We did that. And then we actually, just above that, we have letter of credit options, shall not be available, to an owner or developer without Planning Commission approval, whose past performance has resulted in a breached or expired bond within two years of time of breach. So that's our best attempt to try to, you know, keep up with that. Yes. Yes. Yeah. And we, later, we cleaned up a little bit of that verbiage in there, too, to make that comply with the new requirements.
Quite frankly, hopefully, we'll never get to the point where we have to have a list. But, you know, not taking bonds that really solve the problem as far as what we're dealing with right now. But letters of credit typically don't have the same issues that go with them as bonds can.
Majority of what, we get more letter of credit, always have gotten more letter credits than bonds. There are a few companies that use bonds, but, you know, I hate to use the phrase, but, I mean, one bad egg ruined a bunch, you know? And I mean, if we can't get payment for it, it's just not, it's not any good to me. I mean, it's just, it's wrote on a napkin, you know?
If you have a question on the time of breach, what's the logic in having a different timeframe for the developer versus the financial institution? Why is one two years and the other's five years? What were y'all thinking when you put those numbers in?
I don't remember. That's been over a year ago. I really don't remember why they're different. I don't.
Can't give you anything on that one either. Now that I look at that... Now that I look at that, I'm not sure why we, it seems like we had a reason at the time. I don't remember what that reason is.
Personally, I like the five-year. I mean, if you, if you can't do what you said you're going to do. That's just my thought.
Eric, a couple of questions for you, please. On these letters of credit, as a project progresses and they've got most of the things done, but there might be, say, 10% of the project that has not been done for whatever reason, it's not time to do it yet. Do the letter of credits get reduc, can the letter of credits be reduced when it's time for renewal just to cover that amount that's undone instead of?
Yes. Well, kind of. We, we set a, to use a generic term, and it's not this simple, but for easy math it is, we use about $125 a linear foot for a road. That's how we set a bond. There's other things that go into it, but for quick math. So we set a, set a bond amount, let's say we set it at $100,000. As they go out and build and, and the more work and infrastructure they put on the ground before they ask for building permits to be released, then we will release that, we will reduce that. We will reduce it down to 50%. We used to do more than that and then we learned in 2008 that if you reduce it down too much, yes, you may cover the infrastructure cost on paper, but you won't cover the repairs. And so, you know, anytime we're going to be calling a bond, there's, most of the time there's a repair involved. You know, it's been sitting up there, there's going to be some, something behind it. And so, as a general rule, to make the numbers work out, we've just kind of set on 50%. So, so we will reduce down to that 50%. Typically, when they put in, when they come in and ask for building permits, they're at that 50% mark. So their original bond is typically reduced as far as it'll go. So, and we, we work with, I mean, we, our office deals with all the letter of credit people in town that do most of these and the developers. I mean, we, we've got a pretty good rapport with them. So, we, we try to work with them as good as possible. And I'll sit down and talk to, you know, any, any developer that wants to come in and discuss that and they, they know about our, how our system works and how far we'll go.
Now, what happens when a developer is facing a bankruptcy and he can't get his letter of credit renewed because he doesn't have the credit? What is, what is the county?
Well, in here, it requires that when the bond is set up, we're looking for an auto renewing clause. And it's got that 60 days we just talked about. That auto renewing clause says this thing just, it's just going to keep updating itself until the bank notifies us and gives us 60 days. So, in that case, the bank said, you know, you can't, you know, we're not giving you another one. They would send us a letter that said, you know, on this day, which is 60 days or more from now, we're going to call this bond. And then we would be up there the next day, probably. Let's see here. I think we're on.
I was just going to say, we, we can put all kinds of things in here we want to put in, but if, if, if that developer's going down, they're going out, or they're jumping, they're going to do that. Or they're going to go bankrupt, or they, they're going to, they're going to skip town. I mean, nothing's going to secure that.
Right.
We're hoping this right here is going to, is our best avenue today to try to better the county's situation as far as holding the bag. So, this is all we can do. I mean, there, there still may be a time, what I'm saying is, there still may be a time something happens, but this is a good plan.
When, at some point, when the economy goes through another 2008, we'll probably learn something else that we need to put in here. But as of right now, you know, we're just, you know, we're, we're, we're doing all that we know to do, you know? And I, I can't tell you that we've got it 100%. But we're, you know, and we, we try to talk with our communities around us and, you know, those guys over at the city and, you know, we, you know, I try to look at those expensive things that have happened and try to, you know, what could we do to set up to, to prevent ourselves? And, you know, and I'm open to suggestions. So you guys or anybody else watching at home, I mean, if there's something better, I mean, we're, we're all ears. We want to do this right. Appendix A, and Doug, I'm going to.
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at, I can take care of that.
Okay.
On appendix A, this kind of goes back to the utility certifications we were talking about a few minutes ago, back in article three, I guess that was, or article two, excuse me. Back in article two, essentially what we're doing is that's where we list the certifications that are on the plat. So, we do currently have one in the regulations for the step system, but we would just take that out again, since the language would be provided by CUD in, in that regard, we'd just let them tailor the language to how they need it. And then we would remove the planning commission chairman's signature line from the date, end date, I'm sorry, from the certificate, certificate of approval for recording. That just, that just kind of goes along with what we talked about earlier in that regard, since we're proposing to take the, the chairman out of it as far as approvals of the plat go, signing approval of the plat, you know, that, this would just take care of that. While I've got the floor, I'm just going to jump down to appendix C for definitions and abbreviations. We just wanted to add the following definition. That is something that we do use in the regulations, realized it wasn't defined. So we looked at some, some good definitions we thought of developer and we, we like this one. So basically, we're just adding that definition in. And Eric, you can go ahead and take care of appendix B, I think.
On J6 there, we define a cul-de-sac to comply with the new fire code. We've always done a 75-foot, actually asphalt cul-de-sac. And so, to comply with the fire code and it'll, we're going to increase that to 86 feet. And then there's a, there's a drawing on that next page there, the, the cul-de-sac that shows, and we can still do that on a curb and gutter section, we can still do that in the same 100-foot right of way that we've always used. On a, on a roadside ditch section, we will have to increase the right of way in the cul-de-sac alone by 10 feet. It'll take 110 feet to, to make it fit. And that's just because by the time you put the asphalt down and then you do a, a shoulder and then go down to a ditch, just to make it all fit. And so, we, we, we went back and forth looking, trying, we tried our best to make it fit in 100 feet and we just couldn't make it work. So I think by saying 110, we'll, we'll be okay. Just so you know, that's, 86 is what the city uses. And so, I, I do think that'll be a good thing for us to be consistent with them. You know, that's, most of the guys that are building this stuff are, are working in the city and county and back and forth. And so, for that to be consistent throughout the county, I think, I think will, will not be a bad thing. Turn it over to Doug for the zoning ordinance.
Yes, sir. At this, thank you, Eric. At this point, those are the amendments. I know we kind of went through those kind of quick. There was a lot of good discussion on that. I am going to point out to something real quick. This is just a typo that we just found. Thanks for Ms. Bradford Eagle Eye, Ms. Eagle Eye Bradford over here to help with this. Under critical lots, the last paragraph, talks about a critical lot plan. It looks like we spelled it with an E D, so we just need to take the, the extra N and the E D off, so a critical lot plan as opposed to lot planned. That was just a typo. But we'll be happy to entertain any more questions. Again, Mr. Farley is here, our fire chief, that can answer any questions specific to the fire code. Really, the only thing that, that we talked about really regarding the fire code besides the cul-de-sac width was, was the dead-end length, dead-end street length going down 150.
Doug, let me ask you a question on the, remove the certificate, certificate of approval for the sewer step system.
Yes, sir.
Explain that. Who approves? How do we, how do we have that approval?
As far as the, the language, you mean, or?
Yeah, the language.
Well, as far as the, basically, the language is provided to us from CUD. They're the ones that have the wording of that certificate. What we're proposing for that and for the other utilities is since they pretty much have their standards that they use as far as the wording's concerned, it would just make more sense to leave that up to them to provide the wording they want on the plats as opposed to us dictating what it's supposed to be in the regulations. If they ever need to change it for some reason, then we have to come back through the planning commission to change the wording there. So what we're proposing is just take out that particular certification, which we do have some boilerplate language in the subdivision regulations for now. We would just take that one out and just say, whatever they give you as far as language goes, that's what needs to be on the plat. That's really all we're doing.
Covered.
Yes, sir. It, it's still, the, the certificate still has to be there. It's just they'll be the ones providing the language as opposed to us telling them what it has to be.
I'm, been sitting here thinking about Commissioner Jordan's concern about the, the stub streets that's 150-foot, but if there's no house on that street, let's say it's 175 feet and no house, no driveways on the end of that stub street, I'm wondering what's the purpose of putting in a cul-de-sac if there's no garbage truck, no fire truck, go down there other than for future access for a neighborhood that may or may not be built anytime soon? I'm thinking 150 is, is, you know, it's a, it's a fine line drawn in the sand, but this might be an exception there. If there's no reason for a car to go down there, why do you need a cul-de-sac? You know, maybe, perhaps there should be an exception for that. I think it's just worthy of thought on this.
Well, what, I'll at least say this, that there may not necessarily be any houses down the stub street, but there are times, of course, when there are houses on the corner that sometimes they will have driveway access there. So, I mean, yes, that may be the only traffic in and out, but there may be times when delivery vehicles do have to use that side street or that stub street for some sort of access and then they have to turn around and come back out. So that's my take on it at least. Now, Chief Farley may want to discuss that further as far as the fire code's concerned because this was one of the, this one was the, one of the changes we made in the regulations because of the fire code. So he may want to address that a little more thoroughly than, than what I'm doing.
Like our building code direct enforcement officer was wanting to say something. David, did you? In, in my experience, those cul-de-sacs, if they are.
Well, I was just.
Heavily populated, they become a hangout place for people to go back there at night and do whatever, throw out trash and things like that. So then we've got to be careful about how many cul-de-sacs are there and.
And if the stub street has been lots approved on that stub street, it's possible at any time it could be developed. So if there was no lots, I don't know if it'd be part of the development or not if it was a street, but if it's got lots that you have to turn the corner and go down to that's approved, you know, that, that creates a turnaround situation.
Also too, when, when you read the verbiage that we're talking about, it says, such dead-end streets, when their length exceeds 150 feet, shall provide a turnaround, having the right-of-way diameter of at least 150 feet. If you remember last, I guess our last meeting, you know, we looked at, in Pinnacle Hill subdivision, there was those, those stub roads that went up to a property the developer didn't own and we didn't really feel like it was, we had to make them put a temporary turnaround up there and, and it just, the way it worked out. So we did those little, little, we call them hammerheads, is the, I guess the official term, but just a turnaround. So I mean, I think there's options too, where, where the developer may not have to always put in a cul-de-sac, but as long as there's, they can shorten that distance down to get it to where there's, there's availability to turn around, if that helps any.
Question, questions on item 6A subdivision regulations? We need to conduct a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open on various amendments to subdivision regulations and our planning staff is the applicant. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, we got Chief Farley and Jennifer back there. You guys want to speak? Probably not. I'll declare, I'll declare, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other discussion or are we ready for a motion?
I make a motion, will you approve the adjustments?
Motion to approve the subdivision regulation amendments and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, various amendments to the zoning ordinance, the item number is 14-5003 and our planning staff is the applicant on this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to bring these amendments to you today. I will say this, that although it's about seven pages worth of amendments, it really isn't as bad as it looks and it shouldn't take me that long to go through this, quite frankly. These changes that we're making are really more concerned with the fire code than what we looked at in the subdivision regulations, but the language that we're putting in here is, is pretty general in nature and we'll kind of just go through these just real quick. The first, the first amendment we'll deal with is in section 404, which is the residential zoning section. You'll recall when we approved the zoning ordinance back in 2012, in the RL area, the residential low-density area, which generally requires a one-acre minimum lot size, we put a variable lot size in there. If they were able to meet certain infrastructure requirements regarding sewer and water service, they were able to go down to either 15,000 or 22,000 square foot lot, depending on the circumstances. If they could not provide based on the criteria that was there for either of those reduced lots, then they would have to go with an acre. Really, the only thing we're changing there is under the proposed language, as opposed to just saying adequate water service is available for domestic service and fire protection as determined by the water provider, we're just putting the fire chief in there as well or by, yes, by the fire chief. So, an example for lot size that can be reduced to 15,000 square feet, you'll see under 1B, instead of just having to be the water provider, we're just saying 1B adequate water service is available for domestic as determined by the water provider and fire protection as determined by the fire chief. So basically, what that's going to require is that everybody just works together a little bit. So that's the only reason we, we put that in there. That's really the only change that we're proposing there. The next set of amendments, 405B, fire protection, and really, this goes for everything that you see in 405B, 505C, 605D, 705C, and 805D. It's pretty much the same change. And what we're proposing there is, you see, the current language is that a fire hydrant has to be required for these non-residential uses within 1,000 feet of the proposed development. And you can see what we're changing the language to is that for all approved non-residential uses, again, in those districts, the fire protection shall be provided consistent with the requirements of the adopted fire code for Rutherford County. Again, that language pretty much is the same in all of those different sections. That's really the only thing we're changing. Chief Farley can go into a little more detail as far as how that is, how that is determined, but as I understand it, it's not so much, they, they, they just don't look so much at the distance from a fire hydrant anymore. It has to do with a lot of things, fire flows and, and other issues. And that is allowing them the flexibility to provide or to, to look at all those criteria, make possible trade-offs and things like that. So that's why we're proposing to change that language like that. 405C, 5E for mobile home communities, again, it's pretty much the same thing, just saying that mobile home parks shall have fire protection consistent with the fire code. So that, that's pretty much the same type of language we were dealing with with those other sections. I'm going to skip ahead because again, the rest of those sections are pretty straightforward. It's the same amendment we just talked about. Under 1101T, this is toward the end, firework displays, open air burning and illegal burning. This deals with the chief's ability, the fire chief's ability to restrict open air burning fireworks, displays, those kind of things. We put that in the zoning ordinance because at the time, we did not have the adopted fire code and therefore, the fire chief really didn't have that authority. Now that the fire code has been adopted, he does have that authority, so this really isn't needed in the zoning anymore. So we just proposed to delete that and just mark it as reserved. At some point in the future, we may find something else that needs to go there. And under definitions, we just changed one definition, hazardous occupancy. You'll see under the current language, it has, it references the ICC International Building Code 2006 edition. What we did was just change that to say is further defined by the adopted building and fire codes for Rutherford County. So again, we didn't have to go back through and change everything every time a new code was adopted. So that's really the, the extent of the changes that were proposed in the zoning at this time. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have and Chief Farley is available
Time will conduct a public hearing on item number 14-5003, various amendments to the zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare, declare the public hearing closed. Now we're ready for either further discussion, comments, or a motion.
Doug, did I just overlook where the fire protection is spelled out for the residential R M? RM?
As far as...
I thought that was one of the modifications that we were making. Of course, I had to miss the last meeting, I was out of town, so if there's something I need to be caught up on. But I thought I remembered at the meeting prior to that, Chief Farley saying that there were parts of the code that we were going to opt out of because it was, we felt like it was overly restrictive in residential. I don't know what's happened with that since that meeting.
That, yeah, that's a separate resolution going to be moving through the county commission this week, as a matter of fact, but that's separate from the zoning.
Approve?
Sir.
And a second. Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. If I'm not mistaken, this should go to the full county commission on Thursday, September 7th. Does that sound right, Doug?
Sounds right, right, sir.
That's right. Other business, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 25, 9:00 a.m., at the Planning Department MEAS. And I believe you also have a copy of our building inspection reports. Thing else, Doug?
Just one quick announcement. At the last meeting, we talked about the upcoming State Planners Conference coming at the end of August at the Music City Center. We are planning to provide a planning commissioner training session. Mr. Bill Terry will be there, kind of going over just the basic responsibilities of planning commissions, comprehensive plans and how they relate. Ms. Bridget Jones from Cumberland Region tomorrow will be there to look at things from a more regional perspective. She'll have some of her contemporaries from different parts of the state there as well, kind of outlining some of the initiatives they've taken. If anybody would like to go to that, I'll follow up with an email tomorrow, just to let me know. We'll sign you up. It's only $50, but that'll be something we'll take care of. So I'll send an email out just to see if anybody's interested in going to that. I think it's going to be a good session. Other than that...
Be just for the afternoon of the 28th?
Yes, it'll just be, yeah, thank you. It'll be that Thursday afternoon from 1:30 to about 5:00, so just a one-time thing. That'll go toward your training as well for Public Chapter 862. So, again, I'll...
One, three, four.
Correct, yes, sir. And that's the Thursday, I believe, that's the Thursday, the 28th. If the date's wrong, it's that Thursday, whatever that date of that Thursday, the last week of August is, I think it's 28. But, again, I'll follow up with an email tomorrow about that. But that's all I've got.
Else? We're adjourned. Thank you.